I'd like to call this meeting to order. Tonight, we have the joint meeting of the school district and the village board at 6:00 PM in the Germantown Village Hall Board Room. On the agenda tonight, I'll read the first call and roll call, and then the school board president will read the second as listed. So, the first one says, "This meeting has been given public notice in accordance with Sections 19.83 and 19.84 of the Wisconsin statutes in such form that will apprise the general public and the news media of subject matter that is intended for consideration and action." School Board? Do you want to read the same thing, or just say that it's pretty much the same thing?
It is the same thing.
All right, then I would ask us all to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, before we get started on tonight's agenda, I'm going to give a few minutes to our village administrator to kind of give us some overview on the audio visual and how microphones work and so on and so forth. So, Mr. Krecklow.
Thank you, and thank you to all the staff and from the school district, as well as the school board for being here this evening. Just a couple of tips, we have some new technology that we're using in the village boardroom. The microphones that you have in front of you are live when the light at the top is off. When the light is red, it means it is not transmitting. To turn the microphone on, there's a small button in the middle that you need to push. It's a little sensitive, you need to push it towards the top of the button and hold it for just a second and it'll turn on. And the final thing that I'll note is, we do get a, we do have a lot of viewers out there, believe it or not, who are interested and do give us feedback on how well the systems are working. These microphones are designed to pick up, and they pick up voice as well, when you're speaking into them, but if you turn your head to the side, or if you lean back while you're speaking, they may fade and we will, and there are folks who notice that. So, if you can share the microphone with your neighbor, and when you're using it, try to remember to, just to lean forward, close to the microphone, and speak into it, and that way the folks listening at home will be able to hear everyone a little bit better. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So, we'll go on to the next item on the agenda, which is announcements of forthcoming events of public interest, and we can start with that, with anything that the school district or school board would like to bring forward. Any announcements?
No announcements, other than schools starting in two days, so that's it.
That's a big announcement. I'm sure all the kids are very excited, as they should be. Spoken like a true parent. All right, then we'll go over to the village board side. We'll start with the village board and with committees, and we'll start with Trustee Myers. Thank you. Excuse me, try one more time. What day was that?
20th.
December 20th at meetings?
At 5:00.
Thank you.
An early one.
Trustee Rick Miller.
General Government and Finance will meet same night, September 20th at 6:00 PM.
All right, Trustee Kaminski is not here, so I believe, when is the next Public Works meeting? So, that'll be September 7th at 6:00 PM here at the Village Hall Board Room. Does anyone else have anything else they'd like? I'm sorry? Oh. Is there anything for? I didn't quite understand that. Ah, there we go, thank you. All right, does anyone else have anything else for announcements of forthcoming events of public interest, or committee reports they'd like to bring forward? If not, we can go to citizen input and public appearance on items not subject to a public hearing, there are no public hearings on tonight's agenda, but if there is anyone in the audience or joining us via WebEx that would like to come forward for citizen input or public appearance, you're welcome to do so. All I would ask is you come to the podium, if you're in the audience, and state your name and your address for the record, or if you're within, joining us via WebEx, let the moderator know that you wish to speak during this portion of the agenda. Is there anyone wishing to come forward? All right, then we'll go on to new business. First item under new business is Resolution 23-2021, which is the Third Amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement between the Germantown School District and the Germantown Village Board relating to the School Resource Officer Program. Is there to be brought forward, or any updates on this? Village Administrator?
Yes, I can start, and the superintendent can chime in as well, but I think staff from both the village and the schools are very pleased to let the boards know that we've come to an agreement that we're recommending related to the School Resource Officers. The agreement that's in the packet and before both boards this evening would include a 50/50 cost share for the two positions. That is a change from previous years where the school district paid 75%, the village paid 25%. You know, we do believe this is in the best interest of both organizations, and especially the residents who were, you know, hoping to keep the, both School Resource Officers in the, in the two schools as they have been in the past.
Superintendent, have anything to add?
Yeah, I would just like to add, I want to thank Mr. Krecklow and Chief Snow for our multiple conversations on this topic, and not once did we, was it ever a situation of not wanting the SROs. We value the SROs in our buildings from the, from the DARE program that they do in fifth grade, to the relationships that they build with our students in middle school and high school, and we're very pleased that we can have this resolution, that we can, we can move forward with two SROs in our building. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions, any other comments in regards to this resolution? Out a motion to be in order?
Motion to approve new business air resolution 23-2021.
Second.
I have a question.
Motion made in second, and Trustee Hudson.
How many hours are spent as a full-time employee for the village of Germantown?
Approximately 2,080.
And is the, is it going to be an exact split? So, will 1040 actually be spent in as the SRO?
The School Resource Officers will primarily be assigned to the schools during the nine months of the school year. They will be available, if needed, for some emergency purposes within the Germantown Police Department, and then they will be assigned full-time to the village during the three months of the summer months.
So, on, on the average, what is the percent of time that's spent in schools, and what's the percentage of time that's spent on village business?
I would defer to the police chief to see if he could help with that question.
Thank you, Trustee.
The, the SRO will be primarily assigned to the school during working hours, Monday through Friday. They do have, their schedule's basically a 5:25, 2:43, so that third Friday is typically an off day for the SRO. Realize that position now, if we are short on the road, something like that, where, situation where staffing on the road, or winter, we've done that, where multiple crashes on the highway, something of that nature, we'll be using that position on the road. This is a new situation for us, so it is going to be different, it is going to be a learning curve, different, trying to figure out how that 50/50 split works. In the past, we had just basically assumed they would be in the school, we did not take them out of the school to backfill the road, anything like that, so they were assigned basically to the school anytime the school was in session.
So, there's more leeway to take care of village business during those hours than there was in, in the past agreement?
There, there is now, correct. We had discussed that with the, with the school as well.
Thank you.
We have a motion made in a second, is there further discussion on the motion? School Board, any discussion? Village Board, any further discussion? Okay, then we'll do a roll, not a roll call vote, will everybody in favor, please say aye. Aye. All right, is there anyone opposed? None opposed? Motion carries.
Sir, Mr. President, that, sorry, Village Attorney here, there is a cost to this, it should be a roll call vote. In addition, the school district should make its own motion with respect to this action, and then take their vote as well.
Okay, then we'll start with roll call vote, Village Board, and then we'll defer to the school board, they can make their motion, second it, and go through their action as well for vote. So, roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Aye.
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 All right, I will make a motion to have the school district adopt Resolution 23-2021, which is the Third Amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement between the Germantown School District and the village of Germantown relating to the School Resource Officer Program. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And motion carries.
Okay, Village Attorney, is that, cover it?
Covers it from our end, but I have to admit, I'm not familiar with school district rules in terms of whether they would be a.
Okay, well, thank you for your input.
Although we're not.
Okay, and I appreciate the input. And the next item under new business is Item B, which we have for village update and information, and to present that information to us, I'll turn the meeting back over to our village administrator, Steve Krecklow. Steve?
Thank you. Go through a few brief items here for the public and for the school board, updating all of you on the, the financial foundation of the village, growth-related issues that we have coming forward, and then some efforts we have planning for the future. So, moving on first to the stable tax rate, have a chart here that shows 10 years of combined tax rate for the overlapping taxing jurisdictions that village residents see, the school district, the village, Washington County, and Milwaukee Area Technical College. And when I present this to different organizations, I try to highlight the stability that's in place, and you can see that there's.
That was weird.
That was, that was a new one for me.
That is a first.
But what I am used to talking about are, are tax rates, and you could see that, I think the, that the combined taxing jurisdictions have done a pretty good job of keeping that stable for residents and businesses, between $16 and $18 per thousand for about the past 10 years, which makes it easier for both individuals and for businesses to, to plan their finances. Looking specifically at the village, this slide shows the, the relatively low tax burden and stable tax burden that we have in place. The green bars show the tax levy that, that has, you know, increased slightly over the past 10 years, from about $10 million up to a little bit under $14 million per year. However, as a percentage of income, which is one of the ways to, to look at how affordable those, those taxes are, that's remained relatively stable and has gone down, where it's about 1.5% of, of, of household income within the village of Germantown. The next slide provides some information on how those funds are used in the village, the property tax dollars, where do they go for the money that the village collects. About half of all of the property taxes that we collect go to public safety, the police and fire department, in order to respond to emergencies. Another quarter goes to public works, garbage and recycling collections, snow and ice control, paving, pothole patching, sidewalks, trees, et cetera. About 17% goes to parks and rec, maintaining the park system that the village has in place, offering our recreational programs, which are funded about 20 to 25% through the tax levy, and about 75 to 80% recovered through revenues. And then the remaining 9% is for development, inspections, elections, you know, administration, et cetera. Also, touch base real quickly on some of the things that the village board has done to manage our finances. One of the ways that municipalities look at their fiscal health is, is in terms of fund balance, it has a, a pretty direct relationship to things like our bond rating and interest rates that we pay when we borrow for capital projects, as well as having a rainy day reserve, and you can see that, that that has grown as the village has used some pretty conservative financing principles and budgeting principles, from just over $1 million in 2009, to over $8 million in, I'm sorry, over $18 million, don't have my reading glasses on here, in 2020. This also creates some flexibility for the village board, we have some major capital projects coming forward. All right, I'm going to put my glasses on so I can see. I apologize. Yeah, 8 million, I'm sorry, thank you for correcting me, it was 8 million, not 18 million, $8 million that's available, and this provides some flexibility for the village board in terms of determining how to finance some major, major capital projects coming up, the replacement of the public works facility, and then after that, we'll be looking at the police headquarters, and either a major renovation or a replacement to that facility. Should also look at the debt side of things. There has been some increase in debt over the last few years, as the villages looked at increasing particularly road replacement programs, and over the last several years, and, and looking at the five-year capital plan, funding about $1.5 million of road replacements each year, along with improvements to parks, roofs for village facilities, and, and then equipment, two ambulances that we purchased here recently, and some other capital needs. I wanted to talk briefly about some of the impacts from COVID-19 that we experienced over the past few years, there were some major revenue impacts. In particular, we saw a reduction almost to zero for hotel motel tax revenue that the village receives. Our recreation program saw significant reduction in participation in revenue. Our ambulance fees were down largely because the state department of revenue stopped their collections program related to that, and we saw a reduction in interest earnings. We did balance the budget last year and ended with a small surplus, mostly by holding positions vacant, delaying some seal coating and crack filling of the roads, and delaying some equipment purchases. We also have been informed that we're going to receive a little bit under $2 million in American Rescue Plan funds over this year and next year, we've received the, the first installment of that, and we'll be having some more conversations about the purposes of those funds when we start our budget discussions this fall. Couple more slides, and then I'll wrap up and turn, see if there are any questions. Wanted to talk briefly about some of the growth that's been occurring in the village, there has been a significant amount. There, out on Holy Hill, you'll see a number of, of new buildings that are under construction or soon will be. Zilber at Gateway Crossing is, you'll see the walls up and the roof going on for their fourth building on that site. Dickman Development finished construction of their first two buildings and has submitted plans, and they've had Ben approved for their third building. Capstone, or at least the, the site plan related to that. Capstone Quadrangle recently received approval to start a construction of a building on the south side of Holy Hill Road, across from Briggs and Stratton Building, and actually one that I haven't added to this slide yet. There is a, a new pet food company that is looking to build a new facility on the corner of Goldendale and Holy Hill. There have also been several major expansion projects in village business parks, TCI, MGS, Turnkey Solutions, Automation Solutions have all had, had major expansions. And on the retail side, Bliford's Pet Supplies Plus over on Mequon Road is putting in a new, a new store. Harbor Freight has announced that they'll be locating down on Appleton Avenue, and of course, the, the big boy renovation down on Main Street. And for hotel space, the Holiday Inn Express is expanding and rebranding as a, a part of the Marriott Line. We've also seen quite a bit of residential development, continuing projects which are filling up quickly. Harvest Hills has 37 lots which are nearly full. The Renwood South Development has 47 single-family lots and 44 multifamily lots, those are also under construction very quickly, and we expect that to be sold out very shortly. And Kinderberg Park has 16 family, single-family lots which are, are quickly developing as well. Since residential is moving so quickly, there are two other projects in the pipeline, Renwood North, which would be further up towards Frey, Freystadt Road would have 125 lots, and Heritage Park just south of here and east of Division would have 35 lots. Correct. It is, if you drive south on Division Road, and you look off to the east, there's an open field near Revere, and that is one that was, the, the site plan was approved some time ago, there's been a change of ownership of the developer, but from our understanding is that they are looking at starting construction relatively soon. There are, there are some wetlands in there, but there are space for 35 lots.
Trustee Miller?
In that last slide, it should be Kinderberg Estates.
I'm sorry, yep, I'll make that change. Thank you.
Not building on the hill.
All right, and then the next slide, just real quickly, some of the challenges and opportunities that we face, there are, we, we are working with our aging infrastructure, roads, and levy-funded infrastructure, as well as utility-funded infrastructure, water and sewer. There is a, the Public Service Commission will be considering a water rate increase on their September 9th meeting, which would mostly be going to fund replacement of, of aging infrastructure. We are seeing increasing traffic that needs to develop, that needs to be dealt with, and we're working on some major intersection improvements. The public, as part of our parks planning process, has indicated a desire for more pathways, bike paths, recreational trails, et cetera, and then we're continuing to work through a number of stormwater management issues with ditches, ponds, et cetera, that, that need maintenance and in some, some cases upgrades. And then finally, one of the things in particular that we wanted to mention to the school board, we are working through the final stages of our 2050 comprehensive plan. This will guide village land use decisions for the, the next couple of decades. There is information that's available online at the village website, including the link that's here, social pinpoint, and we can send this information out by email, if folks would like to have a direct link to it. We are planning some additional public input meetings coming up here, and we'll be in touch with the superintendent about potentially having some, some meetings to get more direct input from the, from the schools on the planning process. We're hoping to get to a point where it's ready for village board review and adoption in, in late '21 or, or early '22 at the latest. So, that wraps up my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions folks might have.
Any questions? No questions? Okay, very good. You must have done a heck of a job. Everybody's understanding completely. So, we'll go then to the school district update and information.
Yeah, I'll hand that over to Superintendent Stowson.
Thank you. So, the, a couple of things that we're going to share this evening, and between myself and Brittany Alton-Dorf, our Director of Business Services. So, the, the next slide just lists a couple of things. The first one is, for the past four years, our enrollment in the district has been either flat or declining, just a little bit, like five kids, four kids. The, the issue with that is, as a school district, you get less, there's a reduction in your state aid when your enrollments go down. As of last week, I'm happy to say we are up about 30 students. We'll, our, our third Friday count, our third Friday in September is the most important one, so we will continue to watch that, but we're excited that it's, it's moving up, and most of the enrollments are coming at the elementary level, a lot of kindergarten, first grade students, hoping that they would then be with us for the, the duration until graduation. The other thing is, our schools, I mentioned, in two days, we're starting back with, with school, and, and people are excited, and our staff was in last week preparing. An indicator that the kids are ready is last Wednesday freshman orientation at the high school, out of 340 students, only 11 students didn't, didn't come in for their orientation. So, that's pretty impressive, which, which leads me to the engagement piece, and consistently, Germantown has over 90% of our students that are, that participate in at least one club or activity or athletic event, which is well above the, the state average, which is in the low 70s. We have exceptional coaches and advisors, and I think the, the support of our parents, and obviously the willingness of the kids to participate is why we, we keep those high Last year, with, with COVID, we were, we were a handful of students, or a handful of schools that started in-person learning, it was a hybrid model, but by the, by the semester, we were in full five days a week with a virtual option. This year, almost every school across the state is in-person with a certain mitigation measures that are happening. As a school board, myself, we're continuously monitoring the numbers in the community, as well as our, our local, meaning our, our school student numbers, and the board knows and they're committed to, to making decisions based on the information, and, and we know if we need to, to close a grade level or a classroom, that we will do it. We did it last year several different times throughout the year to get us through some, some hurdles, so we're constantly watching that. I'm on weekly calls with the, the local health department, with area superintendents getting information as well, just to see what's trending in other, other schools. A few years ago, this is the curricular focus, the, the district at the elementary level made a change in their mathematics programming to a program called Bridges Math, and looking at the data from this last year in, in our gra- at the data from this last year in, in our grades three through five, we're definitely seeing that students are making their anticipated growth, even with the awkward year that we had last year. Our kids did outstanding in, in our mathematics, and our, our current focus, and we're in year two of a three-year plan and rollout of our, of our writing program, and we, we've contracted with CISA Six to help us with this, and all of our professional development around this is paid, paid for through federal and state grants that can, that are only designated for professional development. So it's money that doesn't come out of our fund, and it's strictly outside money. Also, our, our, I don't see it on my slide, but our facilities are in excellent shape due to, due to the referendum that passed several years ago and all the updates that have happened. We do have a, a ten-year capital projects plan, and that includes a rotation of when we're replacing roofs, older windows, doors, older HVAC systems, but, but overall, we're in, we're in very good shape. The, the shortages that I listed here is just almost a plug that if anyone is looking for something to do, as you may have seen across the state, across the country, bus drivers are very limited, and it's going to impact us in ways we're not quite sure of yet. We know that we're, the first two weeks of school, we're, we are being as creative as possible to get our after-school to where they need to be using vans. Brittany and myself might be driving at some point, just to get kids there, and also officials. WA just, WIA just released that they are down thirty-eight percent in officials that they've had to, to run our athletics, and which is about a three thousand, or three thousand member decrease, so they're, they were somewhere in the nine thousands and now they're in the six. And then substitute teachers, we always can use substitute teachers, and we use a program called Teachers on Call to help, help place that, and also for people that just want to help out in school, if it's a support person, we're always looking for that as well, so. The, the next piece is, is really the future, and two, two big things that we're focused on for the fall of 2022, and the first one is a four-year-old kindergarten, and our, we're one of, truthfully, a handful of, of districts across the state that does not offer 4K. 4K, which is five-year-olds who are, sorry, they're four, four years old by September first, they, it's an optional for parents, they don't have to, you don't have to send your, your children to 4K. We are going to run a half-day program, so a, a family that is looking for wraparound care, meaning care for eight hours a day, they could be part of our four-year-old kindergarten, and then we would, would bus them to their, to their, if they're in a daycare, daycare provider. And we're, we're in the development stage or the planning stages. Our, our goal is to have by January to send all information out to parents, so we know exactly how many students would be, or how many families would be taking part of the 4K program, because then we have to designate our locations of where it's going to happen, because it won't happen in, in every building most likely, but it's, it's where we're going to have space. The, the second piece is our virtual charter school, and this is a six-twelve charter school, and we applied for a charter school grant, and we were awarded eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars that can be spread out over three years, with the first year being a planning year, they've designated a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for the planning year. Our decision to go to even think about the virtual charter school really came down to three things, and the, the first one is that we lose, or we've been losing about seventy-six students a year to open enrollment, and about half of those students are choosing open enrollment to an e-school, so a virtual online school, so if we can, so and every student we lose, it's eight thousand dollars of them not being part of our, our school. So that was the, the first part, was to try to attract a good number of those students back to our district. Also, we learned this last year during our virtual learning that some students thrive in the virtual environment and do extremely well, and it's a, another option for our kids as they go through, they have a, they have a, a large amount of options as they go through high school and middle school, and this is just one more for a family to choose. And then the last thing is, once the charter school is rolling, we would have the ability to take students from other schools if they were choosing the full hundred percent online learning, which would be revenue for our district and wouldn't, they wouldn't have, they wouldn't be a, a seat in our district, they would just be connected virtually. The other thing that I, I forgot to mention is, is our charter school, if, if a student signs up for it, they can also, they can still take part in our athletics and our co-curriculars, and they can also take classes in the, in either the middle school or high school. So if they take four classes virtually, they still could go and take, let's say, a metals class, or they could take an AP course, so they'd still have access to all of the courses that are offered at the high school, so it's kind of a blended model if a student finds that that's something that they, that they want to, they want to do. The, the other, the other piece is that, you know, we will continue, you know, as a district, to look at opportunities that are, that are good for our kids and good for our schools and, and hopefully good for the community, and we, we know that there, things are always changing, and we have to be adaptable to that, and that's kind of our, our future as we move forward. And then lastly, I'm going to have Ms. Alton Dorff just talk about our, our budget and where we've been this last year, and I, I think most people know, but Ms. Alton Dorff was new last July as my, as well as myself, and it, it's been an interesting year to be, to be new, and she'll talk about where we are with the budget.
Can you hear me? Thanks. For the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, we started a zero-based budgeting process. This allows the district to work from the ground up every year, so we make sure that we are funding the areas that are on our strategic plan. So first we fund those, and then we work our way up to the other expenses. It also allows us to forecast into the future, so we can forecast our expenses and our revenues into future years, which is helpful with projecting enrollment, obviously. When preparing for this school year, and our, our budgeting process starts in January, but our school year starts July first, so it goes July first through June thirtieth, we had many challenges. We had to find reductions that totaled over two million dollars for this school year. We had to make a lot of hard decisions, and we tried to impact our students at the minimal amount. As Brett stated earlier, that our revenues are based solely on our enrollments, so obviously the more children we bring in, the more revenue we get from the state. He stated that we have had minimal declining enrollment over the years, but from two thousand nineteen, twenty to last school year, we lost over a hundred and twenty students, and then this school year, as of August nineteenth, we have got thirty of those students back. So we're still down about ninety-five students than we were two years ago, which then brings our revenue down. Finally, COVID expenses is one other area that I wanted to focus on. We had increased expenses due to COVID, even though that our revenues are decreasing. We had to spend over five hundred thousand dollars in COVID expenses last school year. We did strategically use our ESSR dollars for those, and we will strategically use our ESSR dollars in the future, but the ESSR dollars that we've received so far, we have spent out, so we're waiting for the state and the federal government to let us know any additional funds that we will be giving. I'm not going to go into depth of our, our budget, but I think we're in a good place financially for this upcoming school year, and then if you do want to know any details of our budget, you can attend our annual meeting on September twenty-seventh. That's all I have.
I do have one question. Do you know where those hundred, was it a hundred and thirty students? Do you know where those hundred, why you left the district?
Sure, we don't know where all of them went, we assume. Some of them went to parochial schools, some of them went to the online schools, and again, we did online the best we could, but the online schools, we didn't have that here, and that's one of the reasons we are looking into the virtual charter school. Some were homeschooled, but that's what we're assuming, we, we can't track exactly where all of them went.
Like after, sorry, was there a drop-off after middle school that they left, you know, after eighth grade, or they left after fifth grade? Was there any noticeable numbers of where they left?
No, no, usually we have an increase when it comes to high school, but it didn't, there wasn't any certain area that they dropped off. We did have, I believe our graduating class of high school was larger, so those students dropped off, obviously.
So it was just sporadic across the board?
Mm-hmm.
That's interesting.
And lastly, you know, again, I, I want to thank Steve for our conversations this, this last year, and our dialogue, and, and really making this, this meeting happen, and you know, the, there's a fifth Monday in January, January twenty-twenty-two on the thirty-first, and, and hoping that we can, we can do this again, and, and maybe it's the twenty-fifty plan that we're looking at, and maybe it's looking at shared services that the village has, the district would have, and see if there's savings going in together, doing things, but a couple joint programming pieces that would benefit both of us, obviously would be welcome. Thank you. Any question, other questions to the school?
Trustee Miller?
Thanks for your presentation. On the presentation, you talked about the virtual school. Is that starting this September?
Work in the, work in the system. No, that, we're in the, the planning year of it, and so it would, it would be eligible for students in fall of twenty-twenty-two.
Okay, and then does this have anything to do with Keel, Wisconsin?
Right, so, great question. The, so we've contracted with Keel this, for this school year. Again, previously, if, if a student wanted to be part of an e-school, so like, there's an e-school in Waukesha, Appleton, McFarland, Ripon, Merrill, they, if a, if a child signed up for that school, they were part of that, they became part of that school district. The, the partnership we're doing with Keel right now, they're still our students. Keel is just delivering them the virtual curriculum through what's called the, the Florida Virtual School, so right now, any student that, and we have, as of last week, we had twenty-seven students that are being part of the Keel program, and we were, we were capping at around thirty, so we're right where we thought we would be. And again, we were able to attract students that normally were leaving the district, and so we get, actually have more money that comes back to us because they're staying, and they can then still participate in all of our activities and athletics, and they're our students, and they can, they, they can take two of our, up to two of our classes if they want, and this is for, for K-12, and it's, it, in a way, it's a stopgap for us to get to fall of twenty-twenty-two.
And then is that paid at the same rate as the, the students that are physically in the school, the eight thousand dollars?
Right, so if they, if they stay, we still have to pay Keel something, but it's, it's half of the amount, so we're, we're saving by a student staying with us versus going to another, I mean, staying with us, going to the Keel, it's a four thousand dollar increase back to us.
That's good.
Any other questions? Trustee Peiper?
When is the anticipated start date for 4K?
It, it'd be fall of twenty-twenty-two, so information, so right now, we, we typically do registration for kindergarten in January, and we have the, the 4K at the same time, so we, so we know our numbers.
Question I have is in regard to the number of seats that might be available for students in other schools to come to Germantown versus going out to another school. How many are those?
Yeah, so if, once the program's up and running, it, it technically could be unlimited, and an example is Keel became very popular this year, and, you know, we, we partnered with them fairly early on, but in the last month and a half, they've added fourteen other schools that have partnered with them in the last six months, because it's a, it's a need for districts, and we're hoping though, that once we have ours, we technically could take as, because they're all online, so a piece of, of teaching that goes out via video can go to ten kids or it can go to a hundred and ten kids, so really would be unlimited for us.
In regard to the improvements to the schools and so on, how many years bonding was that?
And I understand it's a thirty-year bond, but we're looking to refinance that, to reduce the amount of years.
Refinance it in any particular year?
We're looking to refinance it, we haven't gone, we can refinance, refinance some of our debt, including that one. We have different debt borrows, and the board is considering or going to look at that with Robert W. Baird in the future, so we can create an escrow account and pay off some of the debt early.
And what year are we in right now? Are we in the third year of the years?
We are in the third year.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Other questions? Well, I echo the superintendent's comments in regards to appreciation of coming together for this meeting. I think the January meeting looks very positive, and I think, I would very much propose us trying to get together and, and having another meeting like this at the end of January. I think, you know, this one is more of a, of a test meeting, and we're kind of, you know, one of the first ones that I remember since two thousand eight or two thousand nine. I don't have my historian here, so I, I, it's been a long time, but I think it's very needed, and, and as we get together and meet more often, I think we start to see a path of, of knowing where you're going and areas where we're going, where that might join together and, and offer savings to the residents as a whole, whether it be in shared services or in different types of improvement projects that might be happening around the school that could benefit, you know, either the schools or, or the school district as a whole. So I look forward to finding those and seeing ways that we can best serve the people that, that put us in these chairs. Any other questions on either side?
Trustee Peiper?
All right, one more question. I do know that we had discussed it very openly in passing regarding the Kennedy Middle School track that's in the back, or the baseball fields. Would there be any interest, I don't know if Steve maybe did cover this with you guys or not, in having the village take that over and putting another field there? I, I'm not speaking for the board, I'm just speaking for myself, I'm very pro-baseball. The fields there, I spent a lot of days there this summer, and I, I know that we could always use some more fields than Germantown, so it was just briefly passing by where the board was discussing it.
Well, but let's reference that a little bit. It's not the track, so it's not like we're looking at track going, oh, nice, nice land, we could put a baseball diamond on it, but there was, at one time, when we were building the outdoor performing arts pavilion, there was a discussion of possibly the baseball diamond that's back there, that the school district might ask or would consider moving it as part of the park, of Fireman's Park. Don't know if that's still available, or if that's something you're still considering, but I do remember it as more of a verbal conversation, and I'm not sure if it was between me and Bob a number of years ago, but it kind of was one of those one conversations, and then nothing was really taken up past that. So as we look at our opportunities of what we need to do for our public works building and some of the, of the replacements that are needed because of the growth of that building, and that is the Little League complex that's nearby, we are also looking at opportunities of where we could expand our, our ball diamonds.
Yeah, I'll just say, first, I want to thank the village trustees and school board for getting here today. It's nice sitting here rather than at that podium, which I'm very comfortable with for the last two years, speaking to this group, and I want to thank Steve and Brett for getting us here, and Dean, thank you. And I want to thank Steve and Brett for getting us here, and Dean, thank you for, I don't even know when we sat down at that one local establishment in town, talking about having this meeting, so it's nice to finally be here, so thank you. I'm, I'm in a different capacity than I was in April. I'm now a director on the board, not the board president, but I will comment as a director on the board, that we discussed that, and that was part of a plan that kind of is put on the back burner right now, and I don't know what it was called. Brittany, it was an outdoor sports venue master plan, which consisted of a lot of moving parts, but based on where we were at from a budget standpoint, the board felt that we didn't want to move forward with that. But that is all in, in the public, and that did consist of the soccer fields being two softball fields, and we would turf it, we would turf the football field, make that much more productive, and make it not only football, but make it for soccer and possibly lacrosse. And then the question was, we have two softball fields and the track over at Kennedy Middle School, which is used by both the varsity and the JV team, which doesn't make sense for our female students to go over there and not at the high school. What do we do with that land? So again, I don't know if that would be brought up to the Board of Education for further conversation, but as one board member, I would welcome that, doing, having some discussions, and that possibly would fund what we need to do over at the high school for our student athletes.
Yeah, that's a, a nice area to start and, and see what opportunities come out of that. Thank you, Bob. Other questions? No other questions? Any announcements? No announcements? Well, again, thank you all for, for coming, thank you all for watching tonight, thank you all for coming to, to the meeting, and I look forward to our, our meeting in January. With that, then, we are adjourned. Thank you all. Good night.